You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the April 24th, 2023 meeting of the Michigan City Common Council Workshop on the Rental Inspection Ordinance. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the workshop about the new proposed ordinance regarding rental inspections and, of course, registrations along with that. Right, so if we could get the PowerPoint started, that would be great. Again, if you want, you could pick up the whole ordinance down there. This is just going to be a brief overview to explain things that people have been questioning. We can go to the first slide. So, no one will disagree that we need good, safe, affordable living space. We need quality rental housing and quality rental housing stock in Michigan's and the city of Michigan City benefits both homeowners and renters. So it helps the homeowners as well to have good renters, protects public health, safety, and welfare of all residents. Okay, so you're going to see some pictures from Michigan City from our own inspectors that, you know, show what some of the things that they come across are. And none of our residents should live in housing that looks like this. When rental properties are not maintained, it's the tenants who suffer the most. And they don't necessarily always have a voice. So these slides are from code enforcement. And this is, you know, current apartments that are leased to tenants. Thank you. So there's a few things that damage the fabric of a neighborhood more than concentrated or bad concentration of blighted or abandoned properties. You all know what that's like. If you have something down the street that's boarded up, that's vacant, that's not being taken care of. So when rental homes fall into disrepair and are eventually boarded up and abandoned, they become magnets for crimes like vandalism, arson, theft of copper or appliances. And violent crime is higher in the immediate area of blighted properties. And I'm sure nobody is for that here. Okay, next slide, please. All right. So when you see boarded up houses down your street, this has a predictable economic impact on nearby homeowners and landlords and the locality at large. Blighted or abandoned properties depress surrounding home values and the local tax base along with them. Cities collect less than property tax revenue while bearing the increased cost of fire and police resources, and eventually the cost of condemning and demolishing those buildings. And I know I've had, I've heard people say something like, well, the tenants can call it in. But no, not every tenant is willing to make the complaint. Simple fact is tenants may not be willing to risk the perceived landlord retaliation for making a complaint. And so relying on individual tenant reports means serious health and safety issues may go unnoticed, unreported, and unrepaired. So anyway, so the landlord registration process, that's the next slide, please. Did it go on?
All right. I have a question. Were those corporate rentals or they?
We'll have, we'll have public comment at the end, so you can, you can ask them. Thank you. Let me get through this PowerPoint, and then there'll be time for you guys to give your opinions and what you think. Thank you. All right. So to register just means that we need to know contact information. And it's a $5 fee. So apparently, the Supreme Court of the State of Indiana said that's the most you can pay to register a property. So that's what we have to do. And we need owner and contact information. So we need a complete rental database that's going to allow our city workers to thoroughly inspect the community's rental properties for minimum living standards without letting any units fall through the cracks. And right now, we do have units falling through the cracks. And for example, I was just looking around Beacon, just, you know, tooling around. And I saw that there was a company from another county that owns 61 rental properties in Michigan City. But when you look up how to contact them, all they have is a P O box. So if you're having, you know, trouble with your tenants, the O box is really not going to be a very expeditious way to get in touch. So the proposed ordinance has registration starting on July 1st through October 1st. And then they need to be reviewed every year by October 1st. And this is to assist the planning department because they have other things that are due in other months. That's a good month for them to do this. All they need is name, telephone number, email of owner, name and address of the person who's in Indiana that's going to be managing the property. Who do we contact? And then the next page. I think we're a little behind here. Right, so yeah, let's go on more, please. And then we have to affirm that the property owner does not have any outstanding, you know, tax liability or fines or penalties because we want that taken care of. We don't want to let that go. A statement of the number of rental units on each separate parcel. So if you have a parcel with three units, that's going to be on that application. And if there's a change of contact, you, the owner has 30 days to notify. I mean, if we have something changing, we need to know, who do you call? Who's in charge? Who owns this property? All right. And so the purpose of rental inspection is to require occupancy inspection of all rental units. Oh, sorry, did I go too far here? Yeah, sorry. You can go, but you can go to the next one. Sorry, I got ahead of myself here. So by statute, property owners have always been legally responsible for maintaining their properties and compliance with applicable codes and laws. And I believe most owners do that. They comply, they have decent properties, and that's not going to be a problem. But we have to have regular periodic inspections to help ensure all the property owners are keeping up with those responsibilities. Because what happens now, hit and miss, you inspect different properties, but you miss a lot. And if there's a systematic way, a fair way, that all apartments get inspected, then there's no saying like, well, he's picking on that guy, and that guy got away with murder or whatever. Everybody gets inspected, and it's not like this really extreme inspection either. So anyway, the purpose for the inspection is we're going to take a look to see if we have minimal property standards. So we're not looking to see if it's really decorated nicely or things like that. But as you saw in those pictures over there, there are things that do not meet minimum standards of living. So you'll get a certificate, and then you'll be good for three years. And there was no charge for the inspection. And in case there's something that was found, there's no charge for the reinspection either. So that's good. So here's some of the things we're going to be looking for. And like, again, this is not fine tooth comb. This is not like the same kind of inspection you would get if you were buying a home and you need to look. This is just to make sure we don't have some of those issues that we saw in that PowerPoint there. So electrical plumbing, waste and sanitary systems, including hot water. Make sure there, everything's vented correctly, heating and ventilation. Someone didn't fix a hot water heater and properly vent it, that would be very tragic. Bathroom toilet facilities, doors, windows, stairways, hallways, et cetera, functioning smoke detector, visible hazards, indoor air quality, available egress, overall structure. And we also were planning to hand out a free carbon monoxide detector with each inspection just to kind of, as a kind of thank you and to help people keep their properties in proper order. So the way this is, this is proposed to work is that two wards will get inspected in the year 2024. So wards one and six, and wards two and five will be inspected in 2025. And wards three and four will be inspected in 2026, and you will enter a three-year cycle. So three years from your inspection date, you will get reinspected again. No fee and no fee for the first reinspection. After that, you know, if there are violations and they don't get addressed, then there will be fines. So the point of this is, we need to inspect all rental properties in a systematic and fair way. We need a prevention-based equitable approach to improve housing quality and to ensure that housing on the rental market is habitable. So that's what I wrote to prepare, to kind of give you an idea. The only way to do fair inspections is to do all inspections, and we have a timeline set up. So I think we had some questions. You can come on up and ask questions.
Good afternoon. Familiar faces. My name is Dave Beal. I'm a former landlord. I live at 3044 Ohio Street. I had a problem that progressed, progressed, progressed. And the inevitable happened. I sold the property. All right, I take some responsibility as a former landlord. And I only have one request. You know, for the sake of clarity, this is a 15-page ordinance. For the sake of clarity, could somebody please read this, not only to the residents here in the chambers, but also to the viewing audience at home, so they know more than just lip service as to what this is all about? Please, would somebody please read it?
You would think that we would do it right now, or I think that's a lot.
I don't think, I don't think we have the time to allow everyone to speak.
It's only, it's only, it's only 15 pages. It clarifies what this ordinance is all about.
Okay, I disagree. I think we should do that at the end if we're going to do that. But to start the meeting off with a complicated reading that doesn't allow some people to really give real life examples of why they are for or against this would be a better way to.
Well, obviously, we have a problem here in Michigan City.
Yes.
Again, and, and it cost me $12,000 to remedy this problem. Through the court system, there's a thing in law called probable cause. When probable cause is established, then there is state law that allows this inspection process to take place. By your probable cause, it's just hearsay. Like if a tenant would make a comment about the condition of the building, the tenant could make an application to the city. That basically generates probable cause. The city then has its responsibility to follow up. That's done through the legal system. Right now, this is, this does not conform to section two, section four of the declaration of civil rights, doesn't conform to section four, and it doesn't conform to section 11 under the Bill of Rights here in the state of Indiana. We have rights. You have responsibilities. I acknowledge that. But the fact of the matter is that this particular ordinance must be read completely before the entire community becomes aware of what's going on. This particular ordinance makes reference to the International Property Maintenance Code under definitions. The International Property Maintenance Code and the International Building Code. Those are not state laws. Those are not federal laws. That is hearsay information. But yet this ordinance contains that language. I'm just saying that, in my opinion, again, I acknowledge what I, what I did. I'm not making apologies. I'm trying to rectify it. But basically, what I'm saying here is this particular ordinance, under definition, make codes to the Property Maintenance Code and the International Building Codes, which is only adhered to by two states in the United States. One is Texas, and one is the state of Indiana. Okay, this lays out guidelines. All right. If this is going to, this, in my opinion, is going to open up a can of worms. Let the inspection department do their job. Let probable cause proceed. Let them do what they have to do to make a better Michigan City. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, though?
Certainly.
So for probable cause, that's fine, someone reports it. But don't you think that a lot, and I mean a lot of the properties, will get by without having someone report them and be even worse shape than the ones we saw in the pictures?
Well, my intent, my intent is to get the public involved. Again, the, the, the naysayers, the people that you made reference to who, you know, don't want to make waves. If I would have known, if I would have known 15 years ago what transpired to me just this last year and a half, if I would have known that there was 172 police calls that were called to that particular location, I knew absolutely nothing about it. There has to be a line of communication being established between the landlords and the community. And, and if that line of communication is established, maybe I wouldn't have experienced what I experienced. I, I admit, I'm responsible 15 years after the fact. If I would have known 15 years prior to the fact, maybe the whole dilemma. And, and you guys know what, what it's all about. You know, I'm always supporting the city of Michigan City. I want to see Michigan City grow. But when it talks about international property maintenance codes and international building codes, that's opening up a can of worms unless you change the language. So this is why I want the entire ordinance, the entire 15 pages read, to clarify to the people out there behind us what this is all about. Thank you for listening. Thank you. And, and again, I have to apologize for what I went through, what I put the city through. But I noticed some of the city on the, on the pictures. Thank you.
Go ahead, Sue. By ordinance, we adopted the International Property Maintenance Code and the Unsafe Building Law by, by city ordinance. By city ordinance, we adopted those two that he mentioned, the Unsafe Building Law and the International Property Maintenance. In our ordinances, long time. I, I could look it up. I don't have it listed, but we adopted it many years ago.
Ernie Hollahan, Trail 2 Gladys Street. I own two rental properties. One right next door to me, one directly behind me. I bought those years ago. I had them completely redone, inside and out. Inspectors came and inspected them. He made a green card. Everything was fine with them. What's the problem now? I don't see no issues with my properties.
Correct.
And I don't see the point of me having to pay you when I've already registered with the fire department.
Well, all right, listen.
How many times do I have to register these properties?
Every year.
You need to go to the fire department and get the, the information. It's registered. I registered when they required it.
Do they have the contact?
Yes, they do.
Good. So why, why are you balking at this $5, you're already registered, it's not?
Why did I have to pay $5 and I didn't have to pay the fire department nothing?
All right, well.
I, I don't see where my property needs inspected. That's why I'm.
Wow, but do you understand?
It's a violation of my tenant's privacy.
Absolutely not.
And mine, yes, it is. They have a right to live.
One inspection.
Coming in their house without their permission.
You have to set it up, and it's one inspection for three years.
My property owners do not want people coming in and inspecting the property.
Well, thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right, thanks. We'll have another comment, please.
I'm not done.
Oh, well, go ahead, finish your comments then.
I gave my point to you.
Do we have any other public comment? All right, come on up.
Okay, I, I got, okay, I got two things, if I can remember them. The first one is.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is Tom, I'm Tom Nelson. I do not live in the city, but I own a, own property in the city. We just, within the last couple of years, had to fill out some kind of form that we listed to the landlord. We listed all our property, the number of apartments, how much rent each apartment went. What happened to those and the information that was received from that?
I believe that's with the tax assessors.
Pardon?
That might have been with the tax assessor.
That was the tax assessor, yes. Could you get the information from them? It just seemed, it just seems like you're trying to pile one thing on another.
Well, taxes, I believe, gives you some kind of discount or break with the taxes.
What's that?
I believe a tax assessor gives you some kind of discount or break the taxes with that. I'm not sure.
Our taxes went from, from in 2014, they went from like $314 a payment up to this year, it's 1,100 and something dollars, dollars of payments. So I, they didn't give us much of a break. I think what they did is they've, well, never mind. The other thing I was going to ask is, suppose some, something requires a large investment or may take more time, are you going to give extension on the 90 days for the reinspection period?
Yes, I believe there are ways that you can postpone your reinspection.
Okay, I did not see that.
Definitely, but.
I, I did not see that in the ordinance, unless I just missed it.
All right, I will take a look.
Okay.
See if we have.
And I, I may think of something else later, but.
If I may, yes. One thing, um, that is not directed at you, at you, you're, you're fine. That, that I, on the, on the, looking around, uh, legal portion of this, there's plenty of cities in Indiana, under the state of Indiana, that have rental inspection programs. I mean, they exist. So I'm, I'm just talking about Indiana. I didn't look in Chicago. I'm not interested in Chicago. I'm a councilman here in Michigan City, Indiana, and we seem to be operating on total laissez-faire. Just let the government stay out. Because that's the bigger picture. Because I, I only know a couple of people personally in here as far as that, that do this for a living and great people. So the amount of tenants that I know in Michigan City, and we've got over 50% of our residents are renters. So the amount of tenants that I personally know is, is, you know, very, very small. And the amount of actual landlords, especially since a nice proportion of them don't live here, is also small. So I'm looking at this from a legality point of view. And there's no way that I can see that a rental inspection program in the state of Indiana is even partially illegal when places like South Bend and Bloomington and all of these places do these things. So if we were to, if we. From a legal point of view, I believe we are well within our legal rights to create a program that is allowed under Indiana law. Tailoring it to our particular circumstances here in Michigan City would be, you know, like, how, how long we're going to get, his question, how long are you going to have to do it? Or do you have exemptions for this or that? I think that's what we would be really trying to work through. But, uh, you know, we don't, I'm not trying to make this personal and go back and forth with anybody about their personal situation because there's absolutely no way that a councilman could actually know the details of the, each individual renter or each individual landlord. But there has to be some method of a market. But, well, go ahead.
I, I want to respond to her because she's not aware of the property tax in Michigan City or La Porte County.
Don't want to go back and forth about the taxes. It's what I.
I just want you to be aware. Rental properties are still set at 3%. Your homeowner's property is at 1%. Plus, you have a county tax they've added on over in county along with that. So you're, you're wrong on as far as property tax.
I stand corrected. $5.
Hello, I'm Lisa Copy, 103 Beverly Court in Michigan City. I'm a relatively new resident here, moved from another state, came to enjoy our beautiful lake. And I bought a lot of rental properties, several. I'm doing everything that I can to make them beautiful, and my tenants are all very, very happy. What I'm concerned with is the houses around me that maybe are owned by someone who's living in them. And they're horrible looking, falling to the ground, there's trash everywhere. I know my friends and I, Sundays, we go out and we pick up trash, bags and bags and bags of trash. And, I mean, it's not good for my property values. It's not good for my tenants. I'm looking for qualified, wonderful tenants. And then I'm picking up alcohol bottles and trash in front of, you know, my properties before I show the property. And then we've got, you know, people who are on the street blasting their music. I just go, I'm so sorry, I didn't know that. I don't live in the property. But it's, you know, it's things like that, that I want a quality life for my tenants as well. Right? But we have to also go after the homeowners. It doesn't cost any money to pick up your trash. It doesn't cost much money to paint or to fix your property, at least so it's presentable. And is there any kind of program to help homeowners that maybe want to do something with their homes? Because it affects us all, right? Is there any plans? I mean, I hope there's plans to beautify Michigan City with all of the money that's coming in here, with all of these developments, right? We need some kind of a plan to beautify this city because we have 5,000 new people coming in the next three years that are going to move here, according to the meeting the other night.
I believe a couple of things are in the works. Also, I think some of our local banks have, I mean, this would take a motivated homeowner, however.
Right.
Local banks have like, you know, low interest loans to help fix up the houses, depending on your income, et cetera. So there are, you know, maybe services and maybe we need to organize all those in one place and just.
So we're inspecting rental, we're inspecting our properties, right? But if you see a house that's falling to the ground, why wouldn't you knock on the door and red tag them for what their house looks like?
We do, and we have plenty of cases out there that we have issued red tags, we issue order repairs. I just abated a property on Willard Avenue.
Okay.
Uh, you know, we took 12 dump truck loads of debris from somebody's yard because of the nuisance and stuff. The city is 30,000 people. There's only three of us in the department.
Right.
We could use a lot more help if anybody wants to.
I could go around the neighborhoods and write all the addresses of all, I mean, you guys drive by them all day long, right?
Honestly, and, and it's, it's a process. I mean, there are certain steps. I mean, there, there are landlords out there that I've written stuff to, and I can't get them to do what they're supposed to do.
And who would I speak with if I walk around and, you know, take notes of all these properties?
All right, I'm going to give you your card.
I'd be, I'd be happy to do that. Your suit, right? Thank you very much, guys.
Oh, you're very welcome. And really, if your properties are just basic minimum living standards, there will be no problem with.
I don't do basic living standards.
But I'm saying, that's all we're looking for. We're like, you saw those pictures that we were showing before.
It's disgusting.
Right, so we don't want that. We want just basics.
Right.
Basics.
And, and I don't disagree with that. But I think that if you, if you infringe these rules upon people who own properties and that are landlords, it should also be on the homeowners, right? I mean, that's.
Everybody.
We're all homeowners.
Everybody gets treated the same as far as when it comes to the conditions on the exterior of the property.
Okay.
And interior when we are in the house. So if there's garbage outside the front house, we address it. If there's an abandoned car, we. And interior when we are in the house. So if there's garbage outside the front house, we address it. If there's an abandoned car, we address it.
Well, I have a lot to report, so I'll be all writing it down in poly soup.
It's a big city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Sherman, been here for quite a few years, been a contractor in this town, all right? I live in one oh seven Hendrix. And, uh, my question is, you know, we've done things that was supposed to get rid of the bad landlord. Now we're on this again. Those pictures you showed, what happened to those houses? What happened to those landlords? Did you do anything about it? Other than take pictures? Did you evict them out of the house and shut the landlords down?
Only one landlord spoke up and he said he sold the property.
Yeah.
You could talk, ask the other landlords in the room here, because they're in the room.
Yeah.
Yeah, we write them up. House goes vacant.
How many, how many bad landlords do we have in town? See, I take offense to this because there are a lot of people out here that know what they're doing and do it right, and they're here tonight.
So great, there are a lot.
Yeah.
So how many landlords out here have received?
The problem is, the problem is, what I was learned a long time ago, I was a manager for Metro for twenty-five years. And if I came in, I wanted to spend a thousand dollars to fix a five dollar problem, I got run out of the office. Until I came back and knew what I was talking about. You, you're wanting to, to charge all the people that's doing the right thing.
Five dollars.
To make up, well, five dollars, still yet. And not, still yet, we still have that problem with bad landlords, which affects us. I was, I was vice president of the Landlord Association for a number of years. I take pictures of every one of my properties before the tenant moves in and they sign the lease that they see everything's there. And I, we told landlords, this is what you need to do. And when they move out, you take pictures. When you guys, when they shut us down for COVID, you know what happened? I had landlord, had tenants that was, had jobs, paying rent, worked all the way through. They quit paying the rent because the court said we couldn't have them. They went out and bought new cars and a lot of vacations. You didn't, don't think I didn't try to bite my tongue off over that?
Yes.
And then when they do move out, I've got a house of garbage. So, you know, this is.
Back to your point, though. You sound like you're a good landlord, and they come through your house, they're gonna just say, everything's great, whatever. But the only way to catch the bad ones is to make sure everybody gets inspected.
Well, the inspections without a warrant is against the constitution. I'm sorry.
Well, you're gonna get. On the door and come say it's inspection time. They do give.
You, I can't even get in half my places without a, a just cause. And the, and the police chief here in town will tell you the same thing. We went after him about problems. And the Swiss tech at the time, and he says, I, we can't go in that building. We have to have a warrant. So again, you know, I, if I say I've got tenants that I need to go and work on stuff, and they say, well, you gotta wait till I'm home and I'll let you in. You know, i- it's, you're, you're, you're bulking up a big storm here because a lot of these tenants aren't gonna let you in. So you're gonna go to court and get all these warrants? In the meantime, what's gonna happen to us? We're gonna sit there and, and wait on you guys to turn the inspection. And, and who's gonna do the inspection? There's this lady here, and this lady here is running day and night, because you can't get no help.
Yeah, I just, just for, just for clarification, because I, I, I don't own rental properties. I, I own my home, and that's it. But just hearing what you had to say. So is that true, when inspection time comes, to get into a house, to inspect it? Do you need a warrant to go into that house?
Let's pass that back to the attorney, please.
Yeah, I can answer that. So you can consent to the inspection, right? I mean, this is something to end with a consent. You don't need a warrant. In the event there's a problem where you don't have a consent, there's a process that you go to court and you receive what's called an administrative warrant. Which is not the same as a warrant or suspected criminal activity or something like that.
Right.
Administrative warrant.
Right.
It can be unnecessary. We don't automatically need a warrant to enter the property for the inspection. It can be consented.
So if you.
I guess the answer is it depends.
If you have twenty percent of, how many homes do you figure here in town? Five thousand, ten thousand, that are rentals? How much, how much money are you gonna spend in time and going to court to get a warrant to inspect the property? The thing is, if it, if it was section eight, then you inspect it prior to the property being rented. And the tenant has to apply for the, for the, uh, the, the property to rent it. So section eight knows who the tenant is and who the landlord. In this case, you're just coming after the landlord.
I.
Yes, you are. Because, you know, if the tenant did half that stuff, a lot of times it do, what are you gonna do about that? It, I mean, it, it's part of doing the business, but we have, we have tenants in this town that are professional artists. I'm gonna tell you, just put it calmly. Because I've had them take refrigerators, stoves, and everything else out of the houses and leave the door wide open.
So besides civil, I have written citations to tenants for unsanitary conditions. We do have codes in our book that when we go in there, I have citations to those tenants and stuff like that. We haven't gone to court and stuff. Um. We've written citations to landlords too. But a lot of times what happens is the person's already in eviction process. It's a, it's a retaliation thing. And we understand that. But when I walk in a house and the minimums are not being met, you know, it, it's high fixing. What happens is you, they get evicted and no one goes back in the apartment for another six to eight months. Now, let's be honest, we're busy, we forget about it. You guys rerun it and, and that's the end of the story.
Don't get me wrong here. I, 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 I hear this from tenants, a lot of tenants, okay? That we have some people in this town that, you know, they come to us and they say, well, you know, I got surgery right now. But why didn't you go to somebody else? The thing, the other thing I think you're missing the point on is a lot of these people are living in those places and not moving out is why. They don't have the money to move anywhere else.
Right.
So the city here, are you ready to go and put affordable housing up for these people? That's why they're there. That is exactly why they're there. They cannot afford the rent.
Right.
And with what's gonna happen here in this town here with, with this rail coming in, because I've seen it happen to too many towns is the rent's gonna climb, and it's gonna climb out of reach of a lot of the people that live and work here.
Mr. Furman, you, you and I have talked plenty of times.
Yes.
Clarification on that statement. Are you saying that is, it is okay for them to live with?
It's not okay for them to live.
Can I finish my question? I, I don't interrupt when anybody else talks.
Right.
Um, is it okay for them to live in these conditions? I, I didn't get the chance to see the, the presentation before I came in. Is it okay for them to live in, in those conditions because they can't afford to go somewhere else? They're trapped.
It's not.
Okay.
But there are other op- option is what? If, if you don't have a place for them to go.
Option is to get it fixed.
Right. But if it doesn't get fixed, you evict them out on the street, which a lot of these landlords, let's call them that, is gonna say, the hell with it, I'm done, get out. Now, where are they going? Where are they going? Somebody can give me an answer? They can't afford anything more than that.
And an eviction is a, a, uh, something that goes to court, am I correct?
They go to court, but when the landlord is.
And then it goes to eviction if they don't get out on a ten, on a ten.
Right, right, right.
They good on the rent at that point.
But I just, I really wanted to clarify that, that, that statement, because it sounded as if.
Yeah.
It's okay for them to live in squat.
It's not okay for them to live in squat.
As, as long as.
Same.
Because they can't afford to go somewhere else. But I think it'd be clarified. That's like, thank you.
You know, and the other thing is, how, was these properties that way when they moved in?
Do you guys take before and after pictures?
Everything, I, I was recording. And the tenants, the tenants signed, signed the lease that they seen the pictures and the, the smoke alarm and everything is there.
Right.
Like the gentleman said here earlier, we, we are registered with the county, and we're registered with the fire department. Now, why can't you get that from the fire department? The fire department's asking for everything you're asking for, and they get it every year in January.
I think they're asking for smoke detectors.
They're asking for who owns the property and how many properties you have, exactly what are the addresses.
Okay.
It, it, it just baffles me that our own council wouldn't know this.
Well, I'm not part of fire department, but here's, here's, here's the other question, though.
It's, it's, it's a city ordinance.
It's not my ordinance. And there, and that's, that's the other thing here. There's ordinances out there that I don't enforce. And people seem to assume that the inspection department enforces everybody's ordinances. Fire department has their own ordinance. Refuse has their own ordinance, sanitation has their own ordinance, okay, like that. I don't know what in particulars. I just do, do know that the fire department requires you to register. They want to make sure you have smoke detectors. They wanna make sure who to have to contact in case there's a fire emergency.
Right.
Okay. We're asking the same thing. No, we don't share everything, because we don't contact the fire department for building inspections and stuff.
Let's take to pick up the phone, the fire department's office right down Michigan Boulevard and say, what's your records? And the lady there will print it out for you, you know.
But she's not.
Huh?
She's not there after hours.
There's somebody here, we, we all work during the day, don't we? Here, in the city?
Things happen after hours.
So I, you know, I, it's, you see my, I can see their frustration because we're registering numerous types of the same information within the same city. Redundancy, you know, and it's, it's, it's there.
I think, I think we're missing the point here. It's not just a matter of the information. It's a matter of, there are ordinances out there that we don't have the ability to enforce. There are people sitting right here in this audience who put it in their lease. If you contact the city, automatic eviction.
Oh, that's, that's wrong. That's, that's, that's admitting you're wrong. I mean.
That, that's, so the tenants are trapped. They know they can't contact us because it's automatic eviction. Okay, so, so these tenants, they know they can't afford to go someplace else, so they're afraid to contact us.
So.
They don't have that, they don't have that ability. It, it's been eliminated from them that they can't contact us when they need help. So by having this ordinance, we have the ability to systematically go through and inspect these. That way the landlord can't say, oh, you called the city. No, 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 they didn't call the city. Your, your lot came up. It was time for us to inspect your properties. This gets us in the door to inspect all the properties. I'm sure, I, in fact, I can see some of the good landlords out there, and I appreciate those good landlords. And some of the landlords that are really good landlords, they even volunteered to come to the meeting. Unfortunately, I thought it was Wednesday and not tonight, so I didn't, they didn't come tonight. Who are happy to have this ordinance, because when your properties around you look better, it makes, it, it gives, it makes their properties better. It's a good thing for everybody. And it's a good thing for the tenants to have that ability, to have their properties systematically inspected. So let's not lose sight of the fact that this is just information gathering.
Well, it, it is, because you're, you're, you're gathering the information. It's already here, that's what I'm saying. And I'm not saying, but I just kinda don't understand why you can't go get the, the information you already have.
The registration information is available. The ability to walk in and inspect systematically is not available.
And it's not gonna be, because most of these tenants was gonna tell you, get a warrant if you wanna come on my.
I, I have yet to have, I, I've been here seven years. I've yet to tell a tenant that I have to get a warrant. Not, not once.
To, to come in and build, and enter a place.
Not, not once.
Uh, I can show you two or three I've got that will tell me you cannot enter this property unless I say it's okay. And I even have it in my leases that for emergencies and repairs, I'm able to come in. But the minute they tell you no, and you go in, guess what?
Oh, no.
The landlord is in trouble. But I, you know, it, it's just, uh, my, my question is, you know, we've been fighting this for a long time. You showed those pictures. What happened to those? And how many do we have? Have anybody got an idea how many you have that would be considered?
Exactly why we have no of this. This is exactly why we have to do this, make sure everyone goes through it, and most people will pass with flying colors.
Good luck. Thanks.
Question. So what, this fire department inspection? Okay, so, all right, so can anyone explain what the fire, what's this fire department registration is? Because it doesn't sound like you'd say they're not going into the house.
No.
In the apartment and inspecting anything.
And, and really.
Go ahead, go ahead and explain what the fire department does.
I'm not sure what the fire department does. I know they check to see if you have a smoke detector and that's about it. But what we are asking, it's really gonna be a one page. It's not gonna be a huge excessive load of paperwork. It's gonna be a one page application, who owns this, whatever. And next year, when you renew, you could just turn that same paper in again with your five dollars. So it's really not gonna be a huge paperwork burden. You know, we're not asking, I mean, some cities ask for the names of the tenants and how much they're paying for rent and what's your insurance company. We're not asking that. We just need to know who owns the building and who is the local person that we can contact for information. And if it's, you know, duplicate of what the fire department asks, I just don't think it's that huge of a deal to fill out a one sheet side of sheet of paper. And again, could you reuse it every year? So that's kind of my thought on that.
Okay, and then I have another question for the, uh, attorney, Joel Harris. Uh, this comment that the last gentleman, uh, made as far as if a renter that it can be put, I guess it can be put in your lease, that if you complain, if you call the city, complain about an issue with your apartment.
That should not be in the.
That you can be evicted from your apartment?
Should not be in the.
Yeah, is that even legal?
It isn't.
It's not, it's a cold, but it's not, it's not ethical, but.
Oh, okay, let the attorney speak.
Yeah, we're free to contract with whoever they wanna contract with. They need some provisions that they want. But if you're penalizing, uh, a tenant from reporting to officials that they're concerned regarding their health and safety, that's a problem. I don't think that provision is enforceable. So if you were to litigate, you'd have litigation over the terms of that lease agreement. I do not believe that would hold up.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think it's enforceable.
Hi, uh, Jaclyn Purze, P U R Z E, thirty-seven, twenty-two, Bittersweet Ave, Michigan Shores. Um, so for the sake of information gathering, I'm, I'm just wondering, um, for those of us that do work closely with section eight on a day-to-day basis, um, has there been a discussion? I, it looks like the ordinance had some language about approved private inspections, or maybe if there's some other type of inspections that'll be happening. Um, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with their, you know, inspection processes. I'm just wondering if, you know, are those gonna be counted? Has there been any discussion? Have you, you know, spoken to their office about what they require for those of us that are already, you know, having annual inspections? And, um, like some of the other landlords were mentioning, some tenants are not so keen on you entering their unit no matter how frequent or infrequent it may be.
Yes, so I'm glad you mentioned it. Yes, there is a provision that if you have a section eight inspection and you have some, a report from it, that could take the place of our inspection.
Okay.
So we still want you to register the property.
Okay, um, and so for the, I guess, questioning along the section eight lines, is there like, for example, in general, they do inspections upon move-in, there's, you know, do them annually, may, but maybe biannually. Of course, it's a little different during COVID. Um, is there a timeframe that you're saying that the section eight inspection will always count? Or, you know, what if they have a backup in their office and they maybe don't get to a unit for eighteen months, twenty-four months? At, at any point, you're, you're planning to accept any formal section eight paperwork as in it's, as the inspection?
I don't know, we have to go, you can answer it.
Yeah, so I think the intention is that the property will be inspected the same as any other property. Any differentiation between a section eight property and just a typical, uh, rented property. If you have an annual inspection that you can provide as substitute for, but suspended by this ordinance, then it's an eligible exemption, you don't have to worry about it.
Okay.
For some reason, there's a backup with whoever's contracted to do those, uh, inspections under section eight programs. Then you would have to visit the city inspection program to stay within the time.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, so I appreciate the info, and I just, for those of you who don't know who I am, I represent Indiana Capital Corp. and all of its subsidiaries. Um, and I do have to say that generally we are opposed to anything that is gonna create, you know, earlier she said there's only three of us. Um, this would be an additional workload on an already understaffed department, but I definitely appreciate, um, the honesty and the information. Thank you.
And just a, a quick comment to, uh, what she said, uh, before Ernie speaks here. And regarding number of code enforcement officers and, and, and things like that, that we would need down the line, obviously, that's gonna come up to the city council, mayor, uh, to, to make budget lines for those positions. So we can add, uh, code enforcement officers. We do understand, uh, like you said, we only have a, a couple here. We've been, there's been a revolving door, uh, in that position, uh, or in those positions. So that would, of course, be on us in order to, to be able to get the number of people to enforce, uh, any kind of ordinance.
Hey, I have a question for Don Bravolinski.
I made a few calls today in regard to a vacant house. It's been vacant for several years. The owner passed away. It was Berg, Bergwald's house. I, I called the, uh, inspection department. I would refer to you. I called the accessories office. I would refer to you.
Oh, wow. If you have a question.
Well, regardless, so they said that you would go in and take care of it. Uh, the house is, is vacant.
Well, I don't know if I would go in and take care of it, but I.
That was my response from them. Okay.
Personal.
But. No, I was, I was requiring on it because I wanted to buy it. But taxes hasn't been paid, paid for two years now. Another three years, then it'll go on tax sale. But the neighbor next door to it, I stopped, he was raking the leaves up. The back door was wide open. There was a dresser pulled out the back door. He said,
How long was that?
He said there've been people in there, in and out of there. So it's, it's another incident of the house on Law Bash Street, you know? It, it was condemned, but yet it sits there empty because the bank owns it. I called on that one too, but.
Thirty twenty-one Law Bash, yes, it's a process when a bank had a forecourt.
Yeah, I know, I know that. I have already checked into it.
So Bergwald's house, Sue and I went there and we secured the front door. We also secured the back door, what was left of the back door.
When?
When? Probably about two and a half ago.
No, this was just a day ago. The neighbor was telling me that the door was open. He said, you can go in if you want. I said, no, I'm not going in there. But that's who I referred to, you. Great. But I seem to have lost your phone number.
I can, Ernie, I'll give you my phone number. That's no problem.
I don't know what happened.
But, you know, I was, no, that was brought to my attention. Like Sue and Chris said, about a month, month and a half ago, that this back door was left open and I called Chris.
I, I knew.
And I know that, and I know that she went over there and.
I knew Mr. Paul very well. He was the city councilman. He was.
Door that type. What's happened between now and then? I don't know.
Well, it, it was open. There was a dresser pulled out the door. I could see from my truck there.
Okay.
But I, I did go by today. It was closed. I don't know if the neighbor closed it or what, but it needs to be checked and make sure it's secured.
So something you guys can do as far as getting that thing boarded up?
This, this is the kind of properties you people need to worry about, not.
It's on my demolition list, sir.
Not properties that, that films are being taken care of.
By doing anything with it because the foundation is shot on and everything else.
There, there's nobody left in the family, so.
I understand that. We've been through the house. We've seen the condition of it.
Hello, everyone. Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. Um, when we first heard about this ordinance and we was at the city council meeting, the very next day, for some reason, me and Paul Preszwalinski ended up in the inspector, uh, inspector office and we started talking to Sue and Christina. Um, one of the things we heard was that it's been very hard to get in touch with the owners of these properties. Christina told us she has no problem with knowing who owned these properties. So I, I, that was kind of misleading in the beginning when we heard this ordinance for the first time. Um, I will admit, um, I believe, I believe that the Michigan City Housing Authority, we have been one of the, uh, biggest violators of tenants' rights and slum lords. They, they have been for numerous years. There do need to be protection for the, for the tenants. We can all agree that they need that protection. Um, unfortunately, we was, we was told also that we have some people that have in their lease that if you call the inspection department, that they will be evicted. That's intimidation in the state of Indiana. And I wish that we could get a copy of that lease or you call those people out individually and let them know that we're not going to tolerate that in Michigan City. Now, now we get into this, um, I can just ask one question at a time. How do you define minimum property standards and who came up with that? What? I'm, Ms. Ziegus, I, I hope I'm not mispronouncing.
Yes, well, so you are not here for the PowerPoint and the pictures that we had. Unfortunately, we maybe run those or whatever. I don't know. But we, there, there are certain things when you walk into a house, you see that, well, there's sewage, you know, dripping, there's sinks that are not working, there's electrical. So it's generally a very, it's not fine to co-inspector, but like if there is something that's vented improperly, like a hot water heater or a furnace, they're going to notice it. So I don't know if one of the inspectors want to chime in and what, it's not going to be a super thorough, like, like we said earlier. If you're buying a home and you hire a home inspector and they go through every square inch of the building, no. But for some of the pictures that we saw earlier today, you could see that there's something definitely wrong and not the code.
I don't, I don't need to see the pictures. I, I've, I've been in these houses with the inspectors. I've seen these. I've seen what's going on. But what I'm asking you, because you keep using it, what is your definition? Now, the, the, a minimum property standard?
Uh, sinks that work, whatever, toilets work, but yeah.
So the ordinance makes reference in, in two different areas to Indiana's unsafe building law and the international property maintenance code. And we had that discussion prior to coming into the meeting, but that's a point of reference for purposes of the minimum standards. That's included in the ordinance.
We already, we, oh, excuse me, we already have on the books where you can go to the inspection office. I've done it with tenants. They fill out the form, they check the boxes, what they, what's wrong in their property. Those tenants have the absolute right to open a door and let the inspectors in.
Yes.
So what do we, what do?
I'm sorry that you missed the beginning part of this meeting.
I'm just asking you a question.
I'm telling you.
If you know what it is, you should be able to just cite it off the top of your head. It's such a big concern.
I'm going to tell you.
Okay.
That the way we're going to have the inspections here is that it's not going to be just getting missed, whoever complains or whatever. Every property will be inspected, so nothing's going to fall through the cracks. You can't say you're picking on this person or this person. Everybody's going to get inspected. So that's why we're doing this, so that every rental property gets a walkthrough to see that if it's not in horrible shape.
Then you, forgive me. Then you started speaking about exemptions. Certain people get ex.
What, like what? For example?
You shaking your head? You won't even let me answer the question. You don't have to be defensive. Just, I'm going to ask a question and it is just what it is. You said that certain, like new developments, they will be exempt from this. Why?
Because they are inspected to get certificate of occupancy. Is that correct?
New, new, new developments also have problems as well. And, and I, I just don't see how you can just single out one group of people as opposed to the other group. And then another thing that you said, that you want to find out who the people are behind the LLCs. Now, state statute gives these people a right to file these LLCs. Now you want to infringe on their rights. The state, let me finish, and you can say whatever you want to say, please.
All right.
Then these people have the right to file an LLC. They have the right to stay private. Again, it seems like, again, this is all about infringing on somebody's right, constitutional right under the fourth amendment. These people have the right not to let you into the house. The landlord should have the right to not let you in the house as well. But if the tenant actually filled out the paperwork that's already on file, they can come in and do their job. We don't have no enforcement behind none of this. You have no enforcement behind none of this. Finding out who's behind the LLC is not right. We need to focus on the rights of the tenant. Stay focused on the rights for the tenant. We need to have bare minimum rights. If the, if the tenant has a problem with their property, they should be able to do exactly what, what's already on the books. But to try to do an end around the constitution, to try to bridge, uh, uh, a, a, a citizen's constitutional right is wrong. And, and the landlord, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd just like to ask you a question on that constitutionality piece. Now, the cities that already have, uh, had these ordinances for quite some time, are, are you suggesting that the constitutionality of Hammond, South Bend? I mean, and a lot of these college towns have these ordinances because they don't want just any old body coming in and renting houses to these kids that are coming back and forth, as, as I inspected the, the laws. So when Michigan City comes up, I, I, I just, my, my point is I don't think, and we've got a lawyer right here, that we're trying to make something up just as if we live in a bubble. Would it be, would it be, uh, amenable to you if we would have just taken existing law from Muncie or South Bend that exists, that is already passed constitutionality statute and just put that on Michigan City? So we can eliminate the law part of it and come into further.
First of all, if I may ask her, I don't, I haven't, I haven't seen what Muncie or any other city has. I only, yeah, I only know about this. And again, you have a right. You take, you're taking the ordinance and you're able to go find out who, who's the owners of the LLC. That's not right. And, and, and when we talk about bare minimum standard, the inspectors have a, a, another code they follow. They got to go to. If they see other things that's wrong, Sue has to report it. You, you, so it's going to go past the bare minimum. We have to be careful here. We're on a slippery slope and then people are going to start being discriminated against. It's always abuse of, of some kind of rule and then we have change it as we go along. I believe wholeheartedly that the inspection department is overwhelmed, but they do, they do a good job when, when tenants are called out. We don't have no enforcement. There's no enforcement whatsoever. Ask them what can they do? They're, they're citing the landlord, they're telling him getting cold. Some are wanting to get cold. Now you, now you can, you need to worry about doing that part. We already have stuff on the books. We don't need to make this more complicated whatsoever. We don't need to know.
So, right.
Play it.
So I do not care to know who owns the LLC, but when I look up where property is owned, we can't contact the owner or a representative. If you look at the re- registration, it could be a local representative that is, is enforced to be the spokesperson for this property. And second of all, this is the whole reason why we want to inspect all the properties because we can't depend on tenant complaints. Some of them are too afraid to say something. We just want to make sure that all of our housing stock meets minimum standards. And besides that, all the good landlords will not really be that much without one inspection in three years.
Well, you infringe one person's rights, you violates everyone's rights, but I'm not here to argue and back and forth. It's just the way you presented it the first time we heard it. I was concerned. You, you made it, I just looked at this last night on Alco. You made it clear that you wanted to know the name of the LLC. And then when we came in and talked to the inspection department, they said they had no problem getting in touch with any of the landlords. Isn't that what we heard, Paul?
That is correct.
Uh, and that's just what the truth of the matter is, but I agree that there needs to be something done. And I think we also agree that we need to work on something to make sure we protect the tenants, tenants' rights first. And before you go into all this other stuff, because I, again, some people you challenge and you go to court, it's a fight. I'm pretty sure in these other cities, there've been some court hearings. And I, I'm pretty sure they've been abused. These rules have been abused as well. I took enough of your time up. Thank you for having the workshop and allowing all of us to come in here and express our opinion one way or the other. Whenever someone speaks, we shouldn't have to frown or shake your head or feel upset about anything. It's just our right to come here and ask questions. And if I offended you in any way, forgive me. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chairman? Yeah, I have a question. With this international property maintenance code that we're going with, and this international building code that we're citing. So what are the differences in those? Because I don't know. I, I haven't read them. But apparently the building inspection department has. What, why are those going to make our department or our housing stock better than what we have already on the books? I mean, we already have rules and regulations in the city code book. So what are these rules and regulation? What is the big difference in the two set of rules? And why do we need to go to international rules rather than staying with what we have already? What's going to be the best improvement if we go from this to that? And why was that part of?
We already have these on the books. So it's our, it's. It's already part of our boss.
Like an addition to our, our ordinance, the ordinances. Um, I'll give you an example. Um, we have an ordinance fifty-eight sixty for accumulation of rubbish and it gives you two paragraphs. One is picking up, uh, rubbish and one is stacking rubbish on pallets six inches off the ground. International property code, uh, I believe it's like three oh one point eight states that there should be no accumulation of rubbish throughout interior or exterior property. It's pretty clear and basic and simple to the point. It doesn't give you a big long paragraph. Sometimes international property maintenance code just clarifies it to a simple sentence and breaks it down to a basic flat code, um, where sometimes our ordinances, our ordinances and some are, you know, like section sixteen oh eight has multiple sections, you know, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, we still incited the other night. Um, you know, international property code has one, has sometimes it has one simple code that actually is very simple, not com- complex, but still, uh, regulates what goes on as far as our city ordinances.
Right, so it's basically a combination of both.
Correct.
I was going to add one more thing to that. So she's right. It's, it's already incorporated by reference to some of your other ordinances. And I think the, the only thing that's different about what's happening, uh, by way of this legislation is that it's taken a proactive approach to these issues as opposed to a reactive approach, which means someone would have to make a complaint, then they react to it. Here, it's just proactive and allows you to get ahead of it. I think that's the, yeah.
All right, first of all.
Do you want to say something?
Yes, I've, uh, been making notes here and I've had my mic on for over forty minutes. Uh, I, I do want to comment on what Rodney was, uh, talking about, that, uh, we spent about forty minutes, um, am I, am I correct on that, Rodney? About forty minutes on talking to Sue and Christine about the proposed ordinance? And through our discussions, I think we came up with the opinion that if uh, landlords in their leases have that they'll be automatically evicted. I'm sitting back here thinking, maybe we should be trying to help landlords and the tenants and everything will work its way out, like having a, a tenant's rights, uh, some kind of, I don't have the correct verbiage, but maybe if the tenants have some kind of language that these landlords will take some kind of, some kind of action. They'll either get out of the business and it'll basically clean itself up. I think that, huh, we're over, I think we're overregulating the, the problem. And, um, I would like to say that also in this ordinance, there is a, uh, uh, section in here that defines section G on page three that the city, it talks about the city planning and inspection department. In addition, the fire marshal is vested with authority to assist in enforcement of this program. Well, now I'm wondering, are, are we gonna increase the fire department staff besides a planning department staff? I think we need to take a different approach here. I, I really, I really do. And as this, uh, I think it's Ms. Purse talked about section eight, they already have an inspection program. And, uh, you know, ma- maybe, maybe instead of regulating, we should cooperate with the landlords and say, this is what we need you to do to change your leases. This is what we need to do to help the landlords that. to do to change your leases. This is what we need to do to help the landlords that are decent. And I, and I truly think that it'll, it'll work itself out. And because you already said that, that the inspection's gonna start and then it's gonna do two wards, then it's gonna do another two wards, then it's gonna do another two wards. So it's gonna be three years out before this take effect in some sections of town. Um, Mr. Sherman on Hendrick Street gave us some good examples about a lot of people don't understand the rental market. Um, I, I, I'm not a pro- a professional landlord or however you wanna term it, but they do in certain times of year, you're not gonna get them out of the house. And you're, and it's a long, long process. So I think the problem here. So when this landlord, his house is trashed and he's got an inspection and then you go in there and you shut him down with I wanna make, wanna make this point, with a code policy that is very restrictive and that was not implemented. It was on the books for over ten years and then you, you guys decided to implement it a couple of years ago. I think we have to solve that problem before we go further and uh make it, make it a lot more uh, uh, a better cooperative spirit in city government to let people work on their homes and, and, and uh bring them up, bring them into compliance. Also, a legal question for um, Mr. Harris. This one lady talked about a uh, uh not exemption for these cities that have been uh quoted today. Is that true? So.
I'm unaware of any exemptions for other cities. I haven't looked at.
So we need to, we need to look at that before we start naming these cities that already have this code. I think that's a point that I, I want researched. Um, now, Mr. Beela talked about police calls at his home. I have a question for Mr. Beela. So in that process, Dave, you had, you had all these police calls there. So did they cite or say your property was a, a nuisance or something of that order?
None whatsoever. I had no communication with the Michigan City Police Department. I personally, when, when I got wind of my existing problem, I personally went down to the Michigan City Police Department and requested, just for sake of convenience, how many police calls came to that specific address? And lo and behold, she came out with a sheet of a hundred and seventy-two ambulance calls and police calls. There was no communication whatsoever between the police department and me as a former land, as a then the current landlord, I am now a former landlord. There was no communication whatsoever. There's no communication in the city uh as to what one entity does versus the other entity does. There's no cooperation. I can, I can point out other places in the city, other responsible departments that don't communicate with me other than when I communicate with them. Oh, then, then I'm of interest. I, I wanna make, I wanna make one point before, uh, hopefully I'm not the last one to, uh, to speak. But the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers and effects against unreasonable search and seizure shall not be violated. Okay, I made a request in the beginning of this meeting for the entire ordinance to be read. Uh, hopefully the entire ordinance will be read before this meeting closes. Thank you.
So I got one follow-up question, Dave. So were they saying that your property was a nuisance or how, what happened?
None whatsoever. No, it, it was a situation, again, to the credit of the inspection department, they made me aware of it. Uh, they, they may not necessarily accept what I'm saying, but they made me, they, the this, all right, to summarize, the, the, the tenants trashed the property. I went to evict them. In my investigation, um, I found these discrepancies. Uh, the, the inspection department didn't have any difficulty getting ahold of me once they became, became aware of the situation. That is called probable cause. They became aware of the situation because how the outside perimeter of the building looked, that is probable cause. They did their job. I'm not faulting them for doing their job, but when, when you've got four arms affecting, you know, thirty, a population of thirty-two hundred people, you know, they're overburdened. They need more people to investigate. As I said earlier, the Indiana Bill of Rights under section eleven prohibits uh, or allows uh people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers and effects. In my opinion, because of lack of communication between the police department and me, this whole scenario that we went through could have been taken care of maybe ten years ago. But it was allowed to fester and fester and get worse and get worse and get worse. And um, again, I, 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 I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to ask you a question.
Sure.
So now, let's just say your property was registered. On call number five, information was sent into a database. Now we know there's been five calls or complaints.
Correct.
And then we call and, and tell you, you have five complaints before you got to a hundred and seventy-two. Then maybe things could have been taken care of.
That is, that is correct.
So your property was registered and we had it in a database. The police department was getting these calls and complaints. They were entering into the database that would update.
But, but somebody.
I'm just saying, but it would update, update everyone. We had that technology to do that. So then a call could have been made to you on call number five, call number six, rather than get to one seventy-two. Which then you could have addressed.
That is correct. At, at least, at, at least.
And their registration would have helped you.
It would, in, in that regard, yes, it would have helped me. But I'm, I'm pointing out to, to this, um, this board that the police department knew about these numerous calls. They did nothing to inform me.
Right. And then if it would have been entered into a database that would be shared amongst our, our.
Right. That's called, uh, Mr. Gennady, that's called cooperation. And, and in, in this regard, I, I, again, I'm not at fault totally, but I do admit some responsibility. Okay. Because I, I wanna see this, I wanna see.
Done? I've been waiting, sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. Is Dave done?
No, I, I had a question.
Uh, sure.
I was just talking about kinda, when a police, a policeman is called out to whatever they're called out to, how do they ascertain the status of the ownership or the rental ownership of the person? How, what, when, when we say that we should get the information from the police, when they, when they go on a call, even the fire department? Is there a process that they ascertain whether the person is a renter or a homeowner? And why, when would that be accumulated from the police?
Yeah, from the police, and I'm not a policeman, but from the police standpoint, I would think that if they had a specific address and if a numerous amount of calls went to that specific address, somebody should inform somebody uh, that there may be probable cause on something at that specific location. And, 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 and somebody should then follow up and maybe, maybe inform the landlord. Hey, man, you got a problem. You better shape up. That was not done as far as I was concerned. That's all I'm saying. I, I support the, I support the concept. Uh, again, and I, I'm not painting myself as a victim, no. I'm, I'm part of the response, I'm part of the problem. And I wanna rectify it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to this man who's waiting.
I have a.
Okay.
Okay, my, my point is, is what Mr. Beela was referring to. Is the, is the cooperation and getting these things under handle. And I, I wanna make this point. Several years ago, several years ago, uh, when Mr. Pugh was here, there was a discussion brought up at a city council meeting about putting a code violation book together and having a, something put together by the inspection department to inform the police department on if they know the code that they could write, they could write a citation. And that never happened. And, and I believe that that is part of the thing that Dave's talking about is cooperation internally. And that the police need to know, cause when they see something that's probable cause and if they keep getting calls to that house, you know, like nuisance calls, all right? That they could say, hey, you keep, we keep getting these calls, we're gonna have to start writing you citations, this, this, this and this. Or if they're there and they know the code violation, they can write a citation and forward it to you, you guys. But in this whole synopsis, is they already have the database. The database is already there with the fire department. Okay? And that they could go there and get the information. There's not been enough due diligence done internally to get this problem, this, if it's a big problem, to get a handle on it. And that is that, I think that there's ways of getting it done without having a this. This, this, this twelve, thirteen pages and on top of that. How, how come, uh, what I wanted to know, what, what, well, I'll say that for the council meeting. My other, my other point I'm gonna make.
Thank you. Okay, a, a last, last comment I wanna make. The International Property Maintenance Code and the International Building Code, that is not law in the state of Indiana. All right, those are, it, it's an advisory organization that provides the basic fundamental uh, building structure of all development. You have some properties in town that are grandfathered in from way, 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 way back that um, doesn't fall under the, 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 the pretense of this international code. This international code applies to buildings throughout the, throughout the world, not necessarily here in Michigan City. And look it up on a computer and, and, and you'll see what I'm talking about. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We have the next team right here.
And then I have a comment back to Mr. Beela when it's going.
No, go ahead, sir.
Oh, one plans. I'm not currently living in Michigan City, but my sons and I do have rental properties. Uh, I think we've already determined that information is available through different agencies, the fire department and taxes. They never have a problem finding me to mail my tax bill. And all, yeah. The uh, illustrations that you had earlier, it uh, to me, looks like some of the code enforcers are out there uh, doing what they're supposed to be doing. And I can, or any of you can drive down streets in Michigan City, not even get out of your vehicle and determine what houses are in violation. If you have a landlord that their house is uh not meeting qualifications inside, I'll almost guarantee you the outside is not very good condition either. So you can probably accomplish both with one scenario. The other uh concern I have is who's going, how many code enforcers are you going to need to hire to accomplish this?
I talked to the planning department, we, at least one, at least one.
That seems like a challenge for one code enforcer to try to do any of this. The other question I have.
Words at a time.
Yeah. Um, how are they gonna get trained in these different areas of inspection?
Okay, we'll talk to Sue, Sue.
No, I was just gonna address your, your number. And our, our current estimate is there are about two thousand of them. And if you divide that up, that's about three inspections a day for one person.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
That's, that, that's three inspections a day for one person, which is.
How many sections a day?
For three, three inspections.
Three inspections a day.
For one person.
For one person.
So we, we calculated we'd be need one more person.
So how long would it take to go through all of these?
Three years.
Three years, okay.
Uh, the, the, the second part of that question is where are they gonna get any training to address some of these issues like electrical systems, heating systems, sanitation systems? Who's, who's gonna train them in those areas?
Same way that we train the, the officers that come in now. And, and the thing is, like, like, like Dolly pointed out, we're looking for basic stuff. Um, most people can walk in and see us, you know, know a sanitation leak or a very unsafe, you saw some of them, a very unsafe electrical. It doesn't take a whole lot to figure out some of these things are very unsafe. We're not looking at paint on the walls and, and, and the details. We're looking at the real basic life safety type of bare minimum standards for people. That's all.
I mean, it, it addresses what they're gonna look at, but it leaves a lot of gray areas to how involved they're gonna get in looking at those areas. I mean, are windows gonna have to have screens or, you know, it, it can get to a point to where sometimes they have to find problems to justify their job. Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I would like to see something a little more specific as to what they're gonna look for. If, you know, if they're gonna have an inspection, then it should be outlined every area that they're gonna look at. And that should be provided to all the landlords so that if there is a concern, maybe we can address it before we get involved in a situation that nobody wants. Uh, my tenants do not want, I have tenants that have been in my house for twenty-five years. It's almost like it's their personal house. They probably could have bought and paid for the house two or three times. They don't want somebody coming into their, what they feel is their private residence, doing an inspection. They look at it as an invasion of their privacy. Uh, now, could I make them open up and go in? I sure, I probably could. And, but, you know, it just doesn't seem like that's very fair to them after they've been there for twenty-five years. I don't, I, I know a lot of landlords in Michigan City, landlord association. I'm not saying people don't have in their lease that if you report to the whatever agency, we're gonna evict you. And I'm not saying they don't. But I'm not aware of any landlord having that in their lease. It's possible.
I'm, I'm aware of definitely positively one who's sitting in this room tonight who has that.
One landlord?
Yeah. And, and sitting in them tonight.
Yeah. Though then definitely that's a problem with that one landlord. But that definitely is not the majority. And then I, I guess I'm looking at, taxes are raised every year. Uh, yes, tax is gonna raise to help pay for this code enforcer for vehicles, insurance, vacation and everything else that goes along. And that's if one code enforcer will be able to accomplish what we want. I see taxes going up again. They've gone up every year for the last four years. And it just, it seems to me like we have ordinance, and I think everybody is uh assured that we have a lot of ordinances in place that we need to address and follow. I think once we did that, we would accomplish pretty much what you're trying to address with this inspection program.
Uh, I'll, I'll address the whole tax increase. Cause what happens is, you know, we have our own tax collection that comes into the city through property taxes, through other means. Um, and we don't plan to raise it. We, we have to find ways to squeeze this into the current pie that we have.
What area is gonna suffer?
What area is gonna suffer?
Yeah.
We have to figure out how we would get this put into the general. It's just like adding another uh, like a code enforcement officer or a engineer or somebody else to work into the park department or whatever it may be. We will have to find, to be able to, to get a line where we can put a new worker into, into the uh, the general fund. into the, uh, the general fund. That would be our responsibility, but it's not gonna be raised taxes in order to be able to afford all these other positions. It, it is really, the mayor makes the budget. And it is going to be up to the mayor. If they want to increase these positions, they find a way to make the budget to be able to make room for new positions, just like we do with any other position in the city.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we never come and said, hey, we want a new, uh, engineer, we're gonna raise the taxes on you. I've been on the council eight years and never said that.
Man, chairman, if I could, yeah, and then address it, and this, it's pretty simple. Is that this position's already budgeted in the inspection department's budget. So we don't have to raise taxes in order to bring this person on. We don't have to go back to the general fund to bring this person on. It's already budgeted in the inspection department's budget. We just don't have someone to fill that position. In fact, I think there's, it's budgeted for two positions. They're just having a hard time trying to find people to fill those positions right now.
That's, uh, in addition to what you already have?
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, it's already budgeted to bring two more people on. So we don't have to raise taxes. That was, that was put into this year's budget back when we approved it.
My other concern is, is I'm sure all of you are aware, most households today, both parties have to work. So i- in most cases are not available during the day. And I saw on the, uh, agenda there that they do have a couple of slots from like five to seven. But if they, uh, they, if somebody's coming into their home, they wanna be there and I don't blame them a bit. And, uh, so are they gonna have to take off work? I mean, most of them are living paycheck to paycheck. They have to miss a day's work to accomplish this. This is a hardship to them. I mean, it's, it just seems like there's a lot of areas here.
Well, it's gonna be one inspection in three years and I know the scheduling is not set yet. We still have to pass this first and then we'll talk about the little details behind it, but it's, it's not gonna be the whole day. It's gonna be a window, right? When you guys go visit somebody, you say you'll be there between something or something, right? And so that's how it's gonna be scheduled and at their convenience, it's not gonna be, we're, we're not gonna determine this day is when you're gonna be, it's, it's, it's gonna be scheduled.
People, you know, cannot take off just an hour for work. They have to take off a day or at least a half day. And like I said, that can be, uh, in some cases, almost a hardship for them. Cause you know, they, they, they can't make rent now. Most of, I, I'll be honest with you, most of my tenants are paying any, and I'm very reasonable on my rent, six hundred and fifty to seven hundred dollars a month. And you know, if I have to incur more cost, it just is very difficult for them to live at any type of standards with excessive rent. And I know these, uh, uh, firms are coming in and buying up blocks of houses. But they're charging twelve, thirteen hundred dollars a month for rent. The people can't, the lower income or the people that are trying to survive in the city can't afford that. So if more landlords are driven out of business and this is continuing to be purchased by larger corporations, they come in and, uh, the rent is very excessive. So.
Thank you, sir.
To say is, um, I'm glad to see Mayor Perry here to, uh, listen to our concerns. So thank you.
Sue and then Paul. I, I just wanna, I wanna clarify something. I wanna make sure everybody present here understands what we're proposing to enforce. The unsafe building law, international property maintenance code are already part of our ordinance. So we're not adding any additional anything to what you already have. It's, a- a- as, as I explained earlier, it, it gets us in the door systematically to inspect all of them. We're not adding anything that's not already there. We're not adding anything that is not already in, 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 by city ordinance. Nothing new. It just gets us in the door for those folks who are afraid to, to come to us for anything. So nothing new.
All right, let's have people speak. Thank you. Paul, let's have people speak to heavens, to sulk again, and then we'll get back to you if you don't mind. Yes, please.
I'm Bob Bellamy, P O Box ten fifty-one, Michigan City. I've been a landlord for about forty years. I have owned lots of property in Michigan City. I'm in the process of getting out because the rules and regulations of this city is making it more difficult for me and it's driving the price up to my tenants. And I'm ready to keep my prices low, but with what this city council does by putting in things like I have to have a licensed electrician, a licensed plumber. These are driving the prices of my rent up and the tenants can't afford them. There's no industry left here in Michigan City. Very, very little. So I'm really upset over that. And are you gonna, what about multi-unit buildings like apartment complexes? Are you doing those? So you'll do Normandy Village? Cool, uh, Cool Spring Pine Tree? Any of the ones on?
The ones that are in the city.
In, okay, that would be on Cool Spring also.
Thank you.
Um, I have one other thing.
Okay.
If you come in and inspect a building of mine and find it to be substandard, will you evict the tenants for me so I can go in and rehab it? So the tenants are not living in a place that they could get hurt or would be in danger? And will you take the responsibility of that? Because it takes me too long and too much money to get them out. So if you could do that for me, I wouldn't have a problem.
Right, so if the, that tenant made the complaint and then they come in and find that, that, that property, you know, needs to be fixed, would you still, uh, evict them?
No, let them take me to court and take it in front of a judge. Either they don't like the way I give them a service and they have the right to leave. You know, it's just like a restaurant, you know? I mean, hey, you're not gonna keep going back to a place that's older charges you and gives you bad food. Well, why would you stay in a house that doesn't?
So what if they had a history of calling you to tell you that, that they've had these problems and they haven't been fixed? Then they call and report the problem. Would you still evict?
I don't usually have.
I'm just asking. As you said, would we evict for you? And I'm just saying in this situation, what we.
The one that finds the house in violation, then you should be the one that would evict them, not me. You evict them. You find it inadequate for them to live in. So it should be your responsibility for their health and safety before mine. If the house doesn't meet your standards, you need to get rid of them. And I do agree with Mr. Kuzdulinski said about the thing a couple of years ago, all these new rules and stuff coming in. I have been always able to work on my own home. I'm qualified to work on my own home. But why aren't I qualified to work on my rental? I've been doing this for forty years. You know, you're just driving the cost of this up to the tenants. You're driving them out of this town.
Thank you.
It, it, can I make a point, comment now?
Yeah, I want.
I think that Mr. Bellamy's, uh, points are well taken and, and it goes back to what I'm looking at is cooperation. And in the bottom line here is where we always keep hearing about affordable housing, affordable housing. And I think the, the point that Mr. Bellamy made should resonate that we are driving the costs up and people can't, cannot afford the rents they have right now. And that these people who provided a service for affordable housing that their homes are getting bought, bought out and the rents are getting jacked up. Cause all they're doing is they're being profiteers. They're being profiteers because of this double trap. And, and you really need to look at what we're doing. We're closing the market to affordable housing. That's what's going on.
All right, thank you. Next.
And you know what? I just wanted to make one comment. I want to keep the rent low so my tenants can afford to stay there. When my tenants can afford to stay, it's good for me, it's good for them, it's good for everybody, it's good for the city. When you get all those transient people coming and going because the rents have been driven up higher and higher, it doesn't work.
Thank you. Yes.
Carol Anzai Spritezer, twenty-two, twelve, Island Drive. I am a landlord here in Michigan City. And I'm all for this ordinance. I think it's very important that we have safe, clean housing. And I truly believe that your electrician, your plumber, your contractors should all be licensed. I, I, I know a lot of people that feel that they can do electricity and plumbing and da-da-da-da-da. But I, I, I really think that it needs to be done legally. I'm all for this. It's part of doing business. The more you do for your tenants, the better the city will be.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tommy Klavik, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. Now, we already got enough, uh, regulations and, and already in place on the books. So I'm worried about them. Also thirteen sixteen Ohio Street and also a member of the Michigan City Fire Merit Commission. I'm quite an expert on the Michigan City Fire Department the last three months, I gotta say. When I read this, this is off the Michigan City, uh, eMichiganC.com website, Michigan City Fire Department page. We already have an inspection program through the, the fire marshal. Um, it's just reasons inspections. In accordance with city ordinance, the fire marshal conducts regular inspections of all businesses and schools within the city limits. The fire ma- marshal may also conduct inspections of private residents and rental units upon request and as time and resources will allow. If you have received your annual inspection within the last three days, please provide for your feedback using the annual uh, fire inspection review survey. It goes on to explain residential and tenant service request. Inspection of private residence is not mandated by city ordinance. However, the Michigan City Fire Department will inspect private homes as a service to the homeowner or tenant as time and resources allow to discuss fire prevention, uh, assess potential hazards and provide suggestion for home escape and plans. To request a residential inspection, please contact the fire marshal or the public, uh, information officer. Uh, let's, it's pretty simple. The farmer come inspect your house, make sure everything, you know, I go, we buy these houses from, you know, my family members. Yeah, it's amazing that, you know, they'll have a TV cord running to every room for your, your cable or your satellite. But there'll be no working smoke or carbon monoxide detectors. I know about ten years ago, we tried to put a, a carbon monoxide detector. All the new constructions are required to have a carbon monoxide detectors. Tomorrow night, the planning commission is gonna have, we're gonna approve of the, the construction of a hundred and eighteen homes on Woodland, Woodland and Paws. It's gonna be called Woodland Ridge subdivision. Uh, wanna make sure that all those homes have, uh, uh, not only smoke detectors, but carbon monoxide detectors when they're, when they're, they often need to check the length of the, 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 the clothes dryer vents. If your clothes dryer, I say, you can, they'll, they'll start a fire and hurt. Your clothes dryer is supposed to be twenty-five feet. And there's also requirements, if you have certain elbows or bends in them too, they have to be like, like twenty-five feet in length, no longer. Thank you.
Thank you. You don't have extra time.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Ortiz from six, five, five, five Wildflower in Portage, Indiana. Um, one part of that ordinance you skipped that, um, I would like to know is why are you asking for taxes that are not paid and, um, delinquent property taxes, assessments or penalties? Why, what, why do you need that for a re- uh, rental registration?
I guess we don't need it, but it seems like if you would be a resident in good standing to have a business in this, in this town, I mean, I think that's something that you need to affirm, that you do not, you're not behind on taxes, you're not behind on violations.
But that's not part of a registration or anything. And you could check on the, to find out if the taxes are paid.
Right, so you just affirm saying, we don't owe any taxes, we don't have any penalties. You just affirm that, that's all.
Because you want to do it basically is why. It, it's not needed for the registration.
Okay.
Second of all, an answer to your question, according to state law, any, in the towns that are exempt had their inspection laws prior to nineteen eighty-four. And, um, that is Bloomington, Muncie, Lafayette, your college towns. Ham- Hammond had an ordinance for, um, boarding houses. So they let them exempt because of that. South Bend is not exempt.
Are you, is, was she, I think what's, what I'm hearing, because I had said other cities do these things. And we're following along. And if I heard you correctly, the only reason they're allowed to do them is cause they were grandfathered so that anybody is attempting to do what we're doing would be illegal.
No, you are allowed to have an inspection.
Create one.
Yes.
You're allowed to create what doesn't have a grandfather, so.
No, but you, the towns you mentioned, our grandfather did.
That was just off the top of my head.
They don't have to follow this law.
Cause my, my premise is that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. If it is legal in the state of Indiana to do what we're attempting to do, we're attempting to tailor it to Michigan City, but we could just grab someone else's and just stick it on top.
That, I was very disappointed that you copied and pasted South Bend's. Yeah, instead of writing your own.
Again, that's what this is for though, to, to tailor it, to listen to people. I think that is the purpose of this, but the legality of the process. And actually having a process is I think the, the, to operate with no process whatsoever, I just can never get my mind around.
As long as you follow a code, the thirty-six code.
Right.
There is also Indiana, um, I see thirty-six twenty-two, I believe it is, it's a fire inspection. Okay, so, um, I wanted to go through some of this and, uh, except when there is a change of ownership of the real property, a permit on an inspection does not expire. And the date on the grandfathered in is June thirtieth of fourteen, if you had it prior to that. Okay, uh, the United States Department, wait, let me start here. Dur- during the previous twelve months, the rental unit has been inspected or is part of a rental unit community that has been inspected by either of the following. The United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority, or another federal or state agency. Or a financial institution or insurance company authorized to do business in Indiana. An inspector who is a registered architect, a professional engineer or satisfies qualifications for an inspector of rental units prescribed by the political subdivision. The inspector may not be an employee of the owner or the landlord. So if you, if someone wants to inspect their own properties, they can. Your ordinance says they have to apply for the aright. That is not the state law. The, and what you can inspect is electrical supply and electrical systems, plumbing, plumbing systems, water supply, including hot water, heating, ventilation and air conditioning equipment and systems, bathrooms and toilets, doors, windows, stairways and hallways, functioning smoke detectors and. functioning smoke detectors and the structure in which a rental unit is located. Lead paint is not in that, which is in your ordinance. And, um, there was something else that I don't remember right now. And a political subdivision may not add to the requirements of this subdivision. So you can't add to the requirements of what is here in your inspections. Also, what was not mentioned, there is a retaliation law. I didn't know we were gonna get into that. I did not bring it. But there is a retaliation law that if you have a landlord, housing provider, that it has this clause in their lease. Indiana State has a retaliation law. There are housing providers cannot retaliate against their tenants. So, and in your, in your answer, there is a federal tenants bill of rights coming out shortly. So it will be federal law. Um, another thing that you need to take into consideration, since they're talking about uh, increased rents and the cost is being pushed up. Housing providers are allowed by this law to charge their tenants for all of these fees, not fines, but they're allowed to pass the, the cost on to their tenants. So that's something you need to consider also. Right now, it's five dollars. If they don't pass the inspection, the tenant could be charged. So that you just can't, we cannot find them, we cannot charge them for the fines. Because a, a lot of times, the damage done to a house, not necessarily some of those, but maybe so, um, has been, uh, done by a tenant.
Excuse me, real quick, can you back me up in, in what you just said? You, you said that the, the, the price of the fee can be added.
The, the fee and, um, just not fine.
But if, but if someone were not to register, it's a fine.
Correct.
So that could not be added to the cost.
Right. The repairs, to my knowledge, can be added because a lot of times tenants do the damage.
And how does, how is that handled now? If, if, if there, if you, you rent this, just give you an example. If, uh, you rent to me and, um, I put down whatever first month's rent plus deposit, everything like that. And upon leaving your property, I've done damage, then you can take my deposit, right?
Correct, and if it's more than the deposit, we can take you to small claims court up to ten thousand dollars.
So that's, that would still be in effect. I'm just trying to figure. That's not changing.
So I just wanted to know that all these, all these, all these fees can be passed on to.
Fee, not fines.
Right.
Or the re-inspection fee.
Exactly, that could be passed on too. Yeah. So, and, and all they have to do, any housing provider, all they have to do is notify their tenant that they're going to get a bill for these fees. And I just want to say, in regards to the lady that had a question about owner-oc houses, my experience in the state is owner-oc can vote. Most housing providers are out of town. They can't vote. That's the difference.
Okay, ma'am. We have two more people waiting.
Okay, there's, um, also, let me go through your ordinance and make sure I got everything. There were parts of it that, um, in, in your ordinance, your dwelling units also cover o- owner-oc by your description. So your owner-oc and you also in, um, section twenty-two eight twelve, H and U both cover owner-oc and, um, it's, you, you are redundant in requesting your registration because owner of record says you can get the information from the recorder's office and, um, other places with the tax inspector, your private inspector options. It doesn't, it, they don't have to be a city, li- uh, Indiana licensed home inspector. I had read previously what they could be and sorry, I'm trying to hurry through all of this. And, um, I don't know what, what article it is of yours, but it's number three and your pages aren't numbered, so I don't even know what page. It's, uh, twenty-two eight thirteen, number three, pursuant to IC thirty-six one twenty-four dash one D. The department may inspect a rental unit that meets the requirements of and has been approved for an exemption if the department has reason to believe or receives a complaint that the rental unit does not comply with code enforcement. So you already have bill ordinances on your books that allows you to go into, into inspect. The reason you want to do them uniformly is so that you have no retaliation at all.
And we can catch the people who are falling through the cracks.
Yes, but your police department can do that when they make calls, your fire department can do that. Other people could do that, not just, you don't need a whole new ordinance to do that. And I would also like to make the suggestion in twenty-two eight nineteen, when you're monitoring progress, you also add housing providers to that list along with your code inspector, department leadership, a common council appointee, mayor's office. If you're going to, it, to monitor progress, you need to have, have opinions of us. Now, it also in one, in fifty-one fifty-three, which you also skipped over in this ordinance. Number F, the owner of record or operator shall be responsible for assisting those in need of short-term relocation within the city from their rental unit. Must, because of owners or operators not compliance with this article. That's in violation of the or, of the bill that's fifteen forty-two, that was passed in twenty-one and made into law. You cannot interfere with landlord-tenant relationships at all unless it's passed through the state. So if the state passes this law, then, then you can add it to your ordinance. Otherwise, you can't. And that's all I have right now.
Very much. Well, we have to take a look at some of this, so thank you for bringing those up.
You're welcome.
Can someone come up who has not spoken yet? Yes.
Hi, uh, my name is, uh, George Ladon. I have, uh, several rental properties here in town. Um, I had more questions than statements for you. I do have the booklet that you guys are going to be referencing regarding this inspection process. And a lot of my questions have to do with issues that arise due to the care, uh, and, um, ability of the tenant there to maintain the house in a clean and safe manner, which is solely their responsibility. Now, outside the property, it's visible. You can tell there's trash in the yard. You can send a inspector out there and, and find out that, uh, yes, they're not in compliance for maintaining the exterior of the home. However, once you get inside, uh, the property, I can tell you that there are gonna be, uh, people, uh, either because they're elder, elderly, infirm, lack the ability, or just don't care to do it. What, what is the responsibility of the landlord when it comes to making sure that that tenant on their own passes this ordinance? Nothing to do with what the pictures are we saw there, but I can tell you that after dinner, after a bath, after all the things that everybody assumes someone should do, clean up, put away, don't block the exit. Uh, if, if this appears to not pass because of tenant neglect, i- am I out of it? I pass and, and it will be okay, and I don't have to step back in and say, you know, Mrs. Johnson, you have to clean the stove, there's grease dripping off the cabinets. When you received the property, it didn't look like that. Here are the pictures. I- am I absolved of all that and everything will be fine because this is how they choose to live inside? Who, who would answer that question?
So are you talking just in general as far as like the stove, the sink is dirty, refrigerator is untapped? What specific code are you, are you, are you wanting information on?
Okay, well, uh, in, in this code book, it, it discusses, um, uh, interior surfaces, including windows, doors shall be maintained good, clean and sanitary condition. What if they're filthy? Is that okay?
No, it's not okay.
Okay, and what if they were clean when given to the tenant? And then two years, three years, ten years later, they're not. Is that, I, now, I will then be a maid or a social worker to get help for this elderly person that smokes three packs a day, and now the nicotine is dripping down the walls.
So usually, it goes by a case-by-case scenario.
Okay.
We've also had a call, Adult Protective Services, when they cannot take care of themselves. There are other programs out there that will come in and assist their cleaning. It doesn't always fall on the landlord. We've had situations, and I assume I've dealt with Adult Protective Services. We've dealt with having helping hands come in. We've, we've got a phone number list that we've dealt with people. We've done a housing authority. We've had people live in their own spilt and squatter because of mental illness or physical attributes that they, they cannot clean the house. It doesn't necessarily fall on a landlord. We will make you aware of the situation at hand. We will also try to get that person in the house some kind of help or assistance with that. Unfortunately, there are times where it's gonna get to a point where, you know, it may be more involved where you're gonna have to get involved and, and see what kind of help. Maybe you might, you might need to give him some help, but I've never, I, we've never been in that situation where the landlord has come in there and has sweep up the, you know, the house or anything unless they've, unless they've picked that person. I mean. We have the ability to cite the tenant as well as the landlord. And, and that has been done. There, there's a precedence there that we do cite the tenant as well, for, for cleanliness standards.
Okay, and you, you've had this ability for years. Okay, and how do you go about collecting the fine? It's, you got that right. So prosecution of violation, this could be for a car parked outside, it could be for the cleanliness that we, we're talking about. It could be for hoarding. It could be for newspaper stacked to the ceiling. And so if you're gonna put another layer of, of, of compliance that did not arise from anything that the landlord has done, but you say, but it's, it's, you know, it's something you need to do, that will preemptively, uh, have landlords not resigning leases. Okay, because that's, it's, it's another step that's involved that is not part of the equation and it wasn't part of how much we were charging at the time. So a, a basic maintenance fee of cleanliness or making sure you're not hoarding, that was never part of the, the, the equation when rent was determined, or whether when I came in in six months and said, hey, this, this, you can't, can't be like this, and they continue that, okay, then y- y- you will have to move. And, and so the most vulnerable here that aren't able to take care of themselves, um, I don't know if there's anything in this program that says, well, out of these two thousand units you're gonna make uh, uh, inspected, how many of those are going to be as a result of the tenants being unable to take care of themselves? And where do you plan on deriving those funds to take care of them?
I, I do this, actually, I do this regularly. And in most ca- in every case that I've run into, it's a matter of either inability or mental illness or something. And there, there are agencies out there who, who assist us with this. First-name basis with, uh, with Adult Protective Services and others like that who, who are willing to assist. And a- a- and honestly, I know it sounds harsh, but we don't want them to continue to live in those. Have I had to condemn a house based upon those reasons? Yes, I have. And, and in every instance, we have been able to find some other, some other place, more appropriate place for them where they can have the help that they need to live in, in sanitary standards.
Okay, a- again, this, this other, uh, question comes, um, from another requirement. Uh, single occupant homes, the occupant of a one-family dwelling or a single tenant non-residential structure shall be responsible for pest elimination on the premises. We have the inspection, it's determined that there's, uh, some sort of infestation. How, how does that go with, uh, with moving forward when it's not the landlord that ha- ha- has created the problem? You can tell it is due to the tenant. Uh, is my inspection passed and we're done, or we now have to show, uh, uh, we have a Franklin Pest Control that's coming in here and that, that bill is presented and then you know so much is done, you follow up in three months, that probably sounds like what it would be. What if the tenant doesn't agree to do that?
This is actually something that has happened before. If it's one individual unit, then it is the tenant's responsibility. If it's multi-units, then it's the landlord's responsibility.
Well, it says if infestation is caused by failure of an occupant to prevent such infestation in the area occupied uh, in a multi-unit building, however, the other units do not, uh, have any issues, the occupant and owner shall sell, uh, share the responsibility. That's, that's in this.
Right, exactly. If it's, if there are additional units involved, then it's gonna, it's gonna fall on you.
Well, it says it would be shared.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, the, one of the, uh, uh, the other points have all been taken care of, but I, I, I wanted to bring to your attention the, the glacial speed of correcting issues that, that are in the city. And what this ordinance is going to do is, is just address, um, landlords in town. And, and so I, I took some pictures and I actually just did it at random, just to see what I would come up with, looked them up in Beacon, found what, what, uh, what we have. Um, and I, I can read these here, but here is, uh, uh, an example of two houses across the street from one another. These are on Tenth Street Historic District. And one of these houses is gonna be corrected and the other one will continue. The one was bought in two thousand sixteen, that's the landlord here. This one is bought in two thousand four. And the, there, there are so many code violations on this house, it, it would take another fifteen minutes to, to tell you about it. And so this will continue. This, this continues. Um, it took me all of about fifteen minutes to, to just drive through, but in there, you will find pictures of, uh, uh, landlord, uh, places as well as. Uh landlord uh places as well as homeowners and. Uh, the homeowners receive no scrutiny and and that never changes ever. And 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 so when we put in all of the money into the city and next door is okay. And and all of the items that come with that type of care, the city is perfectly fine with it because. I've been here for decades, absolute decades. We bought a house at six oh two Ridgeland, the old Coleman Funeral Home back in nineteen ninety five. Next door. Six eighteen or six fourteen, I believe Christine told me is finally gonna be tore down. Finally, that was twenty eight years ago and it was condemned twenty eight years ago. So, oh, oh, yeah, it people, right, I I I've been, I've been. And and so twenty eight years ago, when we purchased a funeral home, fixed it up. That house was in poor shape and nothing's changed until possibly this year. So. When we're all gung ho on making sure to hold us to account, which I agree. Uh, but nothing in here about homeowners doing absolutely anything and you will find in there. Homeowner homeowner and then landlord and. There are cats on the roof, broken windows, things put together like it was cobbled together, but that's a homeowner. And it just stays. And so my question to you is, you're trying to get to this. Extreme point of taking care of two thousand units. Can you tell me in the last five years, we've nailed fifty people? We've corrected fifty egregious houses, we've done a hundred. We've we've taken them to court, we've got a lien on the house and and we were able to correct this many issues and just this is just by. Driving outside, not by going in to tenant complaints, but. The egregious examples of neglect that continue for decades. And and so tell me that you did fifty of them. I I I have on here. That it it's the fine, the fine that that you're gonna impose. Uh, not less than fifty dollars and then uh up to twenty five hundred and then it multiplies by the day. How many people have you implemented that ordinance to that you can say they had to sell it and it's corrected? I I don't know. You know, that should be part of the discussion that we know how to do this because we can show you that we fixed a hundred of them. But you haven't. And I can tell you, because I've been doing this for thirty plus years. So start with something small. Start with fifty a year that are egregious. And and then say, look, we repaired this and we we took care of it. Uh, one other thing is just to tell you that. Um, it. When you when you create more regulations, you're gonna limit investment and I can give you an anecdotal uh sc- scenario. We bought maybe seven places uh in the historic district. And my last one is in two thousand one, because when I finished that. I had to jump through all kinds of hoops regarding what's allowed, what's not, vinyl siding's okay, and now it's not and. Uh, the the point that I'm making there. Is as an investor, you can choose to invest anywhere and if they are accommodating, if they encourage investment, if they. Uh, will will be your partner. We will continue to invest. And so. Um, here is the the last one that I did, three, two, four, East Tenth. And and uh, uh, I will pass even round two.
So one, one, one K Street tenant landlord complaint, illegal third unit apartment. They were shut down, third unit apartment, people were evicted, he's got an order to repair to get the property up to date. One oh nine K Street is up for sale.
That's sold.
Oh, okay, so sold up to date. I I go with Ozil every day. Two oh four Thomas, um, it's an order to repair, it was issued by Jeff Linet- Linetsky for the cleanup of the. Property as far as all the uh. Lawn moors and cars and stuff like that. Two eleven, I'm gonna have to look at the street addresses because I I know.
That's a church. Did you know that?
Two eleven Ridgeland?
Yeah, because it pays zero taxes, zero taxes because they're saying that that's a church.
Hey landlord owned, that was old Mr. Tom's house right there. He had to pull the permit to redo the bathroom and everything and there's cockroaches. There's a landlord complaint on that one.
Okay, I'm gonna I'm gonna stop you for a second. I think you two can have a very good conversation about this and we're not gonna solve all the problems in the city. We are not gonna solve it.
That I I told you about was like that.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty two years ago, the one that you said cockroach, it was like that and it looked just like that twenty two years ago. So whatever you did, it it's not working. It and and perhaps it would if if it was twenty five hundred dollar fine, twenty five hundred dollar fine. Pardon?
What do you suggest?
I suggest that, what does that mean when when the code?
So be negative about this ordinance, but what I have my suggestions, how about let's be positive about this whole thing. No, no, I hear negativity.
Well, I'm saying, uh, use what's on the books, you have the ability to find the people on section fifty one fifty. And do you, do you find them?
We do. You want my see my six?
I would like to know what revenue was generated and how many places you corrected. Yeah, I'd like to know that.
Okay, I can. So thank you very much. It sounds like you guys can make a conversation after this. I would like to pull this. Pull this up and 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 this meeting because it's already gone over two hours. So thank you very much for coming. It was very interesting to hear from everybody and and we will take all your comments under consideration. Oh, you had one more comment? Oh, you said, sorry, one more, come on up, come on up, sir.
Yeah, and ma- madam chairman, because I had something I wanted to add on. When Mr. Bill uh Beal got done talking, but I didn't.
Gets up here, so if you don't mind.
Soon as he gets done, I'd like to uh.
All right.
Big reference to something.
I know, it's a long meeting.
Well, we're here to pass it out and get the fat.
Hear, hear from them, yeah. Absolutely.
Sometimes it takes a little while.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Hey, George.
My name is Douglas Sims.
That's good.
I own property in Michigan City at two, two locations, it used to be three. I've been in the landlording business for. Over twenty years. I have had properties in the good parts of the city and the bad parts of the city. And the bad parts of the city that became the good parts of the city. So I've experienced quite a range. I have some questions I'd like to throw out. This is a workshop, correct? Therefore, things are being communicated that one would hope enhance the work that's already been done. And let's make it a better thing. Okay? The the number one thing that I look at as I look at this information is. There is no responsibility on the tenant. In regards to this. And you have to understand, the tenant has control of the asset legally. So therefore, when it comes to you gaining entrance, you getting information. Or you obtaining information about who owns it, which you already get. You have two resources where you could dip with that. So I don't understand that that being a part of this. Getting back to my point, the tenant is responsible. I had a situation in regards to. Us, a a property on the west side that had I had owned for over twenty years. And unfortunately. I got some bad people. Some real bad people. I would say they were professionally bad people. They knew exactly what buttons to push at the city. Which point in time had I got fined? Had to pay repairs of over twenty five hundred dollars. And eventually was so stressed out that I sold the building. You guys won. The reason why I say that is. When I attempted to work with these individuals at this property. Excuse me, I have to sort of summarize this. I had no access to the property for several months because of an eviction. Once I started those proceedings, I don't enter the property. It was a duplex. The property is on the lower part of the building where the. Eviction was occurring. The upper part of the building, top floor was rented. After I gained access to the bottom of the apartment after the eviction. I noticed that we had a major problem. Under the bathroom. In the apartment upstairs. I would bring you photographs, but I didn't think about bringing those this because this is a idea session. Okay, but I've experienced problems, the city has experienced the problems. We jointly have experienced the problems and the situation is not very good for landlords. Because in this specific situation, the support beams for the floor upstairs, it falling through the floor. I went to the city immediately once I found that out. And as soon as I went in the office. You're Doug Sims, we've got a citation for you. Excuse me, I came in because the floor is about to fall. Oh, you get garbage that's piled up on the rear deck. You know, I paid somebody to clear that up, it should be gone now. We haven't checked yet, but we will. I had placed someone, they had cleaned it up. And the tenant, it started to generate it again. I had no control.
All right, sir, could you please?
Yes.
Real relevant to this ordinance. I'm sorry.
I am so sorry that I'm waiting to the end, but this is impertinent information. My ideas is to. Get the tenant involved with the responsibility of this and we will eliminate many problems. If we make the tenant actually go to the city to get a registration so that they could get an apartment. And then once they get an apartment they're interested in, they could show our landlord the certificate. So the landlord can go, I'm on down inspectors. Because this place is is ready to go and these people are ready to rip and I'm ready to get my money back. Yes.
Is there an example where we could use a site or place that actually does that? I mean, anywhere in the United States where we could, because I I'd be interested to look at that to see.
Do you?
How they actually do.
My experiences with the city, no, there is no formal thing.
Okay.
I drew this up on paper because you guys were so up my bat. And it's like, excuse me. If the city could generate revenue in doing this, then it's gonna be a benefit for you. It's gonna be a benefit to me. Because then we're gonna make sure the spot is ready, is going to be available for the people. Who can do it? I have found that people in Michigan City are not responsible. Okay, oh wow. I have rented to members of this board, tenant, relatives, assuming that they were going to be responsible. And they walked out on the list, lease. I'm going gee whiz. This guy's cousin or relative to a city councilman, this is gonna work out real good. Unfortunately, it did not. So I can't assume name recognition or anything else like that. So when I went to people, I'm looking at them face value. I'm trusting them. And unfortunately, we have bad seeds. And I think if we could implement or make responsible the tenants in some degree. But this is gonna be a success. Landlords are not gonna be coming here itching. Because the tenants are going to be involved. If the tenants, as I say, have to get the five dollar certificate or the fifty dollar certificate. So that the landlord could have proved that they're really motivated, then hell, you can inspect their apartment every month. Part of my idea is at the end of the lease, you guys come out and inspect it and see what I gotta do to clean it back up.
Can I, can I, can I read something real quick?
Okay, that's a lot. Thank you very much.
Just this.
This can be it.
Yeah, I just wanna, um, I looked on the Indiana Civil Rights Commission and I'll give the address of it, one hundred North Senate. Avenue Room in one oh three Indianapolis, Indiana, telephone number three one seven two three two twenty six hundred. Uh, landlord rights in the state of Indiana. And it says a landlord has the right to enter the rental unit, although he cannot enter anytime he wishes. Okay, the landlord gives first uh reasonable notice to visit at reasonable hours.
Which I was instructed by that.
Neither entrance of reasonable is defined in the code, but most landlords give twenty four hour notice and enter uh during normal business hours. The reason of entry include requested repairs.
Everything that you're suggesting, sir.
Is this still true? As you said.
The law hasn't changed and this was just reasonably left here. Your, what your signing is is absolutely true. You don't need to read it to me. The bottom line is.
But I was just.
I believe that it would be more productive.
That somebody.
If we had tenants.
And I'm saying you got.
Responsible.
Chance to.
Okay, that's, you know, I'm just saying if somehow.
Let you finish talking, but I understand. It's.
If we could somehow get the tenants involved in this process.
And I'm.
You will not have a fight in regards to the landlord because. We wanna rent the properties and we want it to be in decent shape. The situation that I got caught in with the with with the city, as I said, they were professionals.
All right.
Okay, they, I I was the second property that they did it to.
All right, thank you, sir. I think we're gonna have to wind this up because we're.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. You know, I don't want that to be adversarial.
Please soul point, all right, Doc.
The tenants should be involved in this so that the landlords.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I just wanna share something with the uh the council members. Because uh the the issue came up with the amount of police calls that came to uh. Mr. Beal's house, the amount of the amount of police calls that came to South Wabash Street. When that house was condemned and I was, that's when uh. Uh, Chief Dion Campbell is a police chief. And he invited me down there that day and so did uh Sue and Chris. Because neighbors were complaining to me of the condition of this place. Anyway, it was it was horrendous. And even the chief of police said, yeah, I I I had been in here before, but nobody really made any record of it. Okay, and there had been, they had been there like seventy some times to this place. And there were, you know, needles laying around, all kinds of stuff going on. And so. Then I think it was a couple of months ago, we had a meeting with the uh. Assistant Chief Cooney, Corley, uh, Sue was there. Amber LaPage was there, because we were looking at this nuisance uh ordinance. But the point I'm trying to make is that the police department was going to work. With the inspection department so that when officers went to houses. That they saw were in horrendous condition. And I'm not talking about a police officer going around and making inspections in bathrooms and kitchens and what have you. But just in total disarray, where possibly maybe people shouldn't be living in this uh condition. That there they were, they are supposed to be developing some type of report. That they can combine into the reports that they. Sent, they fill out every time they go to a residence. And then that information was gonna be shared with the inspection department. And the inspection department was gonna follow up on these houses. So that's where that sat and that was two months ago, that that was discussed. Now where it's at right now. I don't know who's followed up with who or if nothing's been done, but yeah. So something was discussed about that, trying to get something going. And uh that's up to the department that has to follow through and get that done. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. Well, we'll see forward to all, those are your comments.